And her son Matt, who's a lieutenant and a training officer with our volunteer fire department, will be doing the oath of office.
I do solemnly swear that I will support and protect and defend the Constitution of the government of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and Government of the United States.
And the State of Florida and the Charter of the Town of Southwest Ranches, and will protect the rural residential character of the town.
And the State of Florida and the Charter of the Town of Southwest Ranches, and will protect the rural residential character of the town.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State and Charter of the Town of Southwest Ranches.
Under the Constitution of the State and the Charter of the Town of Southwest Ranches, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of council member upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Okay. With your help, I'll be a success, and I work for you, so anytime, guys, don't dial the house phone, only my cell, don't be afraid to email me, I'm always on there, I'm a Realtor, so I'm always at a computer, so, thank you very much, and I look forward to helping everyone the best I can.
That's me.
Bring this meeting to order, turn up my mic, please.
Test.
Testing, testing, there we go. Okay, roll call, please. Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Emmenson.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, number three, selection of vice mayor.
Mayor, I believe we'll need a motion in a second to select a vice mayor.
I make the motion to... I make the motion to appoint Dee Schroder, vice mayor, for the next year's term.
Second.
Awesome. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed, any other discussion up here? Seeing none, closed, roll call, please.
Mayor, I'm gonna just read the resolution title for that.
Go right ahead.
It's the Resolution of the Town of Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, appointing Councilmember Denise Schroder as the new vice mayor of the Town of Southwest Ranches and providing an effective date. So we have a motion in a second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hartman.
I didn't think I was first anymore.
I just haven't penciled, uh, Councilmember Emmenson in.
Yes.
I apologize. Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Schroder, I should say.
In a minute.
I got this all out of order, so I apologize.
How about we all just say yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jablonski, Mayor McKay, all right, great, thank you.
Okay. President's Volunteer Service Award, Nicholas Garcia, all right, we got, you wanna take over, Russell, or what?
Sure, Mayor, I'll speak on this issue, so, I just wanted to introduce everyone to Mr. Nicholas Garcia, Nicholas, would you please stand and come to the lectern, please, up to the front? So Nicholas, for those of you who don't know this young man, if you got to know him, you would have a lot of faith in the youth of today. Nicholas is an outstanding young man who has volunteered his time to not just Southwest Ranches causes, but causes throughout our community in Broward County. I was approached about Nicholas's service, and we determined that it was worthy of some real formal recognition. Nicholas has volunteered over 900 hours of volunteer hours for various causes. If I were to sit here and enumerate all of those different causes, we would have a much longer council meeting tonight, so I won't do that, so for the sake of brevity, I'll just say that, again, over 900 hours of community service. The Presidential Volunteer Service Award is a prestigious award that recognizes volunteer service in the community. They have various categories of recognition, and unfortunately, the highest level of service that we could recognize is the gold level, which is what Nicholas is achieving. That gold level is 300 hours of service, Nicholas has tripled that effort, so I just wanted to point that out as to how much this young man has done for our community and for the community at large, so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize him, and on behalf of the Town of Southwest Ranches, the Thousand Points Alight Foundation, and the President's Volunteer Service Award Foundation, I want to confer this certificate to Mr. Nicholas Garcia, and I'll just read the caption on the certificate, it says, "The President's Volunteer Service Award is presented to Nicholas Garcia, Gold by the Corporation for National and Community Service and Recognition and Appreciation for their commitment, for his commitment, to strengthen our nation and communities through volunteer service," and it's awarded this year, 2019. It also is accompanied with a letter from our President, Donald Trump, which I'll provide to Mr. Garcia as well. I kept everything in the box for you, so I didn't scratch or dent anything up for you, so, and in addition... Yep.
Absolutely.
Remember that picture opportunity?
Nicholas, would you like to say anything?
Thank you for this award, I appreciate it, and everyone have a great night, thank you. Okay.
All right. Our Arbor Day stuff, where's Russell, he's not back Arbor yet, okay. Yep, for Arbor Day, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, the next item is a proclamation for Arbor Day, so I'll read the proclamation into the record. Whereas in 1872, Sterling Morton proposed to the Neba- excuse me, Nebraska Board of Agriculture, that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas in accordance with the policies and goals of the Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan adopted May 8, 2003, the town set forth measurable objectives for the protection and enhancement of critical ecological systems integral to South Florida's and the town's natural environment, including the maintenance and improvement of air quality by increasing tree coverage in the town, and by meeting the standards to become recognized by the National Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA. And whereas on December 20, 2007, Southwest Ranches was recognized as a Tree City USA, and whereas continuing to meet the standards for designation as a Tree City USA provides direction for management of the town's tree resources, encourages public education about tree care, and promotes a sense of pride in the community. And whereas Southwest Ranches has continued to meet all standards and requirements for continuing designation as Tree City USA, and will be recognized in 2020 for its 14th consecutive year. And whereas annual proclamation of Arbor Day in Southwest Ranches is a requirement for continuing recognition as Tree City USA, and whereas trees reduce the erosion of topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce lifesaving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches that annually, the third Friday in January shall be recognized as Arbor Day in the Town of Southwest Ranches. Further, the council urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our tree resources, and to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this 21st day of November, 2019, Mayor Doug McKay.
Awesome, thank you. December, you gonna come up for this?
Yeah, we'll present that.
Okay, okay. All right, gladly, pleasure. All right. Yeah, public comment, Keith?
Rules.
I have two. Sure, Mayor, we have two public comment cards tonight, if anyone else wants to speak on public comment, under the rules, you need to submit your card now, you have three minutes to speak on any non-agenda issue, the two speakers we have tonight are David Kozinski and George Kalas. David?
David Kozinski, 6411 Hollaty Trail, speaking on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, first, I'd like to congratulate new council member, Delsa, congratulations, thank you so much for taking, giving up your time for that, thank you. Got a text from a neighbor yesterday advising me that his home was broken into on Sterling Road, so I like to ask neighbors during this holiday season to be extra vigilant, because there's gonna be package thefts, if anybody sees anything out of the ordinary, you see a car sitting somewhere a little too long, it's okay to call the Davy Police, let them, they'll check the car, maybe check an ID, maybe they scare somebody away, I really hope that that works. And let everybody know that our December meeting, we're not having a meeting this month due to Thanksgiving, but our December meeting will be on the 11th at the Wonder Bar, so, thanks, and once again, congratulations, thanks.
George?
George Kalas, 6721 Hancock Road, my property is, joins the power poles to the south, on the south. Let me reiterate what I've said in the past, I'm not against farms, nurseries, or ranches, however, this property has, under the power poles, this property has become a dumping ground for mulch and fill, there's been over 30 truckloads of mulch coming in, and according to Robert, we can't do nothing because he has a right to farm. I'm here complaining about the condition of the way the place looks, okay, the, the like properties on Hollaty, Malaluka, and Appaloosa, as well as all the nurseries on Volunteer, and the nurseries in and around Sunshine Ranches are well-maintained, as compared to this, this guy takes a front loader and he cuts his grass with a front loader, he just, I mean, it's just a mess, the stuff just keeps coming in. The, he's got a box truck and a pickup that's been there for over five weeks, there's no house, obviously, on this piece of property, so I think that's against our rules or our laws. The thing really looks bad, if you take the time to drive around, you'll see what I'm talking about, just drive past the property and take a look. When I'm out front, all my neighbors give me their condolences for the way the property looks, the, and it just devalages, it devalages the property all the way around. On a piece of paper here, written by Robert Solara, there is a statement there that says, "We have the right to, and we're entitled to a safe, healthy, and attractive environment." Well, I'm not getting that. On the same token, I want to thank Robert for stopping all that 40 truckloads of manure from coming in, so, I'm here to ask you guys, especially you Dee, you're, now that you're vice mayor, you're my rep, so, maybe you guys can get together, we can't change the law, I get that, but we can change the rules right here. So, if there are any questions, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. No more final, no more public speakers, Mayor.
Okay, yeah. Board reports, any board reports tonight? A few.
Gridlock.
Not very often we get that.
Good evening, congratulations, Delsa. My name is Joan Ritchie Boyd, I'm the chairperson of the town's last remaining original member of the town's oldest board, the Rural Public Arts and Design Board. When I was vice president of Green Meadows Homeowners Association, I participated in the grassroots efforts with Mecafink to establish Southwest Ranches, I've been around for a while. I like to come and talk to Town Council when there's something important to say or to relay to you, so tonight, I'd like to talk about the town's image and to make a special request. First, I wanted to explain that I designed the town's logo, and I did so to portray the feelings of the town's residents, and reflect the area's lifestyle and image, the same lifestyle reflected in the town's motto, preserving our rural lifestyle. Our lifestyle is unique, and that's noted on the town's website, residents moved here for dark skies and no cement, we used to have a slogan that said, "The cement stops here." We came here for animals, equestrian life, peace and quiet, with roosters, less traffic and good neighbors. We do not want to be Weston or Pembroke Pines, and definitely not Miami. We are one of the last unique areas in South Florida to have this type of lifestyle. With that being said, I would like to explain that the Rural Public Arts and Design Board was originally established to facilitate rural identification design. Rural identification of the town needs to maintain a cohesive flow, continuity, and a sense of place throughout the town. What I've observed lately is that the town's image is becoming a little bit lost. These factors, the cohesive flow, continuity, and sense of place, cannot be maintained when entities, neighborhoods, HOAs, or developers come in and do their own thing, or, you know, make their own designs and images. Different designs, like clip art that is not unique, less expensive metal signs, I won't say cheap, bent and rusted, all look like mismatched clutter in the town, that's not what we want to look like. Our town's boundaries start to fade, and we will look like Highway 441 or University Drive if it continues in that direction, our sense of place would be lost. We become a metropolitan suburbia if that happens. The image part is, I've finished with, so I want to discuss my request. The Rural Public Arts and Design Board worked tirelessly to establish a specifications and design manual, Town Council and officials have copies, I think we have some on the desk Russell can hand out. Presentations and artworks were reviewed during the time period that we were composing the manuals, and can some of those designs were chosen and incorporated into these, the board's manuals. Specifications meet ren requirements, as well as that of traffic accidents, and having to be breakaway type signs, so no one, you know, gets hurt, hopefully, they don't get, have any accidents, or get hurt worse than what would happen if they were to hit one. I would like to see, and this is my request, I would like to see the years of hard work by the Rural Public Arts and Design Board come to fruition and have legal bearing now and in the future. Otherwise, why did we spend all these years having this board and not anything come of it? After all, and I'm gonna say it, my hair has gotten totally gray since I've been waiting for something to happen with this manual and our, our work that we've done, thank you for your support of our board.
So in essence, the long and short is, the rural...
In the mic, if you could.
And introduce yourself.
Barbara Gonzalez, and I'm part of the Rural Public Arts Board as well, with Joan, Karen Parkinson, Rose, Karen French, Terry Ramirez, and Robert Serrada, so, we come in and we meet once a month, and we talk about what we'd like to see, and this board has been around way, way before I joined the town, so I'm the baby of the board, but I can see the heart and the passion that went into designing the specifications. And we provided everyone with copies, it's something that everyone that's lived in the town is familiar with, it's basically the design that everyone's familiar with when you drive into Town Hall, when you drive into some of the parks, and what we want to do is, we're a small town with a big heart and a big personality, we've been able to hold our own against the Westens, the Pembroke Pines, the Davys, and all those other towns, what we want is, when people drive through Griffin, when people drive through our town, they can know that they're in Southwest Ranches and not somewhere else. So, the way that we've done that is by creating this design specification manual that was done 20 years back, and there was a lot of heart and a lot of time put into it, but where it kind of fell short is, there was no teeth given to it, and that's probably something that maybe should have happened 20 years ago, back in the day when it was all created and put together, but neither here nor there, where we are now is, we don't want it to be lost, all that time and effort that was put into that design, I don't think it's something that no one in the town wants to see gone, so in essence, we just want, what the board would love to see is for it to be codified and made into something, not that's gonna apply retroactively, we don't want to step on anyone's toes, what we want is, going forward, if someone's gonna come to the town and say, "We want to change this sign, or we want to put up a new sign," okay, no problem, here's what we're looking at in terms of colors, here's what we're looking at in terms of forms, here's what we're looking at in terms of materials, and if you look into the actual manual, it's got a lot of details, but it's also got a lot of different options, there's big signs, small signs, entryway signs, you know, all kinds of different things, depending on what the need is, so in essence, it's not something that's meant to step on anyone's toes or upset anyone, it's something that really just kind of brings everyone together as to what was, what the original intent was, you know, that sense of place and that sense of cohesiveness, so, long and short, all we're looking for is just adding, and we're open to questions, you know, we'll gladly answer any questions that you may have, we're open to suggestions, setting up a meeting, if there's any way that we can help in codifying this, obviously...
We don't usually go back and forth from up here under, this is a board report thing, so, we'll talk with the administrator about it and the town attorney, and find out what they can come up with, and then get back to your board and let you know what we...
Sounds good, thank you for your time, thank you for your support.
Glad.
Steve Roy Cruz, just representing the Fire Assessment Board that met this past, this, earlier this week, and we went through, just to give a quick update, we went through the document as best we could, we did go through the main areas, we didn't make it through the entire document, but we did get through the areas that we were requested to go through, so it is back now for further review from Legal, and from the procurement group, and so I'm sure they will adjust it and keep it all in line, and Delsa, congratulations, it's great to see you up there.
Mary Gay Chapels, Parks and Trails, Frontier Trails now has a small pavilion, and handicap parking, and one parking spot, and then a grass section stabilized parking for one car. The vendor that bid it and did it, we have very limited funds, understand that these funds that we get are grants, and we have to meet certain standards, and we're doing certain things to qualify, in other words, we have the little canopy area, and then we have the parking, and then it had to have signs, there are certain requirements, I read on Facebook, some people went out there and they criticized, "Why is there signs?" They were confused, so on and so forth, there's a reason why it's there, it's one of the requirements, and the other thing is, the vendor that did it went about 110% beyond what the standard requirement of his bid was, he put in a fence because he felt that everybody that has those ATVs that are riding on that property would then cut straight across this landscape piece, so he put up a beautiful fence all across the back, then proceeded to clean about 100 additional feet and landscape it, and trim up the trees that are native to preserve them, and then he seeded it and sodded it, and I just want everybody to know that that was not part of the bid, he did it because he takes pride in the town, and he took pride in what he was doing, and he felt that if he had just done what was on the bid, it would be overgrown, there was all hollies on the south side of it, budding right up against it, so, I just want everybody to know that when you look at it, you really need to know everything about what we're doing, and that particular piece looks really nice, and you should go by and see it, it's about 110% more than what it was supposed to be, and I want to thank the vendor for it, so, we're working to put out something for country estates, so that everybody will have a chance to come up with some ideas for the entrance way, and that doesn't mean we have any money to do it, but it gives us a focal point, and once we decide which wins, then we'll start looking for either donations, or somebody to help, or maybe a grant, but, that should be coming out... But that should be coming out in the next month or two. Thank you.
Debbie Green, I'm here on behalf of the Education Board. On Monday evening, the Ed Board met and we were discussing the difficulties that the high school students face in trying to turn onto the southbound lane of 27 from the light at Griffin. It's a big safety concern to many. And with that being said, the following was approved by the board unanimously and requested to bring to the attention of the council. So we made a motion requesting the Town Council petition the FDOT to install a green arrow light at the second light of the Griffin Road-US-27 intersection in order to assist students needing to turn south onto 27 as they drive to West Broward High School. That's ensuring a safe journey. So that, it just gives them their own time to make a left turn onto US-27 that for new drivers, that US-27 is not a normal type of highway or road. So it just gives them a one direct, you know you can make a left turn now and no one else is going. It's all yours. And, you know, all the way back from, this council has, you know, all the way back from when our, our students were founded over to West Broward, that that was of utmost importance between the council and the Broward County School Board. And there's just, in some areas, that's just kind of been lacking. It's just kind of been off to the side and, you know, thank God, there hasn't been a fatality. There's been accidents, no fatality, but we don't want to wait even for one. So we're asking again for you all to please address this, address with Broward County Schools because maybe they have more input into it. So bringing that to you. And then on a second note, a better note, I just wanted to, I know we've mentioned it, but just to mention again, the Seek Youth Association of South Florida, along with the Town of Southwest Ranches and the Advisory Board's working with them in the Raise for Unity and Diversity 5K Run Walk. So this second annual event will be this leap day, February 29th, 2020. And just asking everyone, if you look on the town website, there's a flyer on the website and there's a QR code. And so those of you who are cool, and know that you can scan that QR code. If you scan it from your phone, it will take you directly to the registration site. And so for right now, the, for, I think it's 13 and up is $20. It's an early bird discount of $5. If you register before February 1st, it's $20. From 6 to 13 is $15 and under 5 is free. But again, it's right up before February 1st, that's the registration fee. After that, it'll go up $5. So everyone get your, register, get your friends together. Anyone's in schools, any teams or works, kind of put a team together and just to make- Last year, this event generated, all the proceeds from it go to the Town of Southwest Ranches Scholarship Fund. Last year, it raised $10,000 and they're looking to make it even better this year. Thanks.
Any additional board reports? See none?
I think we ran out of boards.
Yeah? I don't worry, more will be coming, I'm sure. All right, council member comments. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go first.
Go ahead, Gary.
Okay. I got a lot tonight, ladies and gentlemen. As always, thank you all for coming. Got a few, few things that are, some people are going to like to hear. First off, welcome, council member Elsa, if I may, Admison. You look good. It's nice to have you up here. Thank you. So I appreciate, I appreciate your sacrifices you're about to make that you don't know about yet. I'm thanking you in advance.
Don't scare her off.
Yeah, well, I'm counting on you, you know?
Okay, great. The Rural Arts has been talking about this design standards that they've been wanting to implement for quite some time. I think we should probably get Keith going on a possible ordinance and we can debate it back and forth.
Already have.
Okay, all right. So I think we should get that in motion now. And then, it's a process that we're going to have to go through and check it out, so let's get that rolling. Couple, couple items of note. We had a car show, the Parks Board had a car show out at the barn last weekend. Very well attended, a lot of people, a lot of volunteers, everybody had a great time. Got to see a lot of people. And I want to express my condolences to Samantha Schroeder. That poor girl had the booth right next to me. And I'm telling you, after 1:00 she had earplugs in because she heard the same dumb joke at least 100 times.
Hundred, one.
And the joke was funny to the person that came up, but, you know, after you heard it several times, it's so. So I offer her my condolences and she did a great job, so, but, poor thing.
Let me step in and clarify. He came in first place and Samantha came in second place.
But anyway, we had, we had a lot of fun. Hopefully, a lot of money was raised for the parks. It all goes to the parks and the town and everybody enjoyed themselves. I just want to mention a few other things. We have the horse show, the youth horse show coming up on the 14th of December. December, did I get that right, the date? Thank you. I just wanted to say December, December, so. It's from 8:00 to 5:00 PM, 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night at the Equestrian Park. It's free, it's free to all the entrance. Is that correct? Right, okay. Senator Rubio's office is going to be here on the 12th from 10:00 to 11:00. If you have any question or any help with federal matters, social security, Medicare, whatever, whatever you've got and any, an issue with that you need help with. The Flowmobile will be here at Town Hall on the 26th from, it's the day after Christmas, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM. We have on the Education Advisory Board, we have a really great thing coming up. It's Mr. and Mrs. Southwest Ranches. It's on the 3rd of January. I believe that's Friday night, if I'm not correct, at 6:00 PM at the barn. Information on the website, call Town Hall if you need more information. It's a great, great fundraiser and it's a lot of fun to be at. We have the December, the Second Annual December Holiday Light Contest for the most festive home decorated in Southwest Ranches. The entry form is due on Monday, December, by December 2nd. And the judging will commence on Monday by the Rural Arts and Design Board on December 9th. And awards will be given out on the 12th by a special guest. I think he's a jolly old chubby guy with a white beard and red hat, and so I know it can't be me. So that's coming up. There's something from a serious note I want to get into here. I've kind of wrote everything down so I don't forget everything, but something new that I want to bring the council in on this now. A frequent complaint at virtually every HOA meeting and most public comment sessions are about traffic problems in our town. They're all throughout the town. We're basically a cut-through area for people trying to get somewhere else, as you all know. You know, we all hear all this at the meetings we attend and the town keeps trying to manage the problem with our limited resources. So this got me thinking to draw a little bit outside the lines and I came up with some ideas to remedy some of the traffic problems. Well, one of them got traction. I've been working with Andy for a short while here and to try one of the more feasible ideas and it looks like it may work on multiple levels. And now's the time I need to share it with the council of what I've been up to and I need your support to complete this project. The project consists of utilizing overtime or detail officers who will be solely tasked with traffic enforcement without lessening the officers on duty patrolling our town. Our goal will be to add additional patrols to increase the number of tickets issued. And if we issued more tickets, the town receives more additional revenue from those tickets. This is not a moneymaker. I need to be very clear on this. This is not a quota system by any means. This is not a moneymaker. That's not the intention here. The additional revenue would offset the additional cost of those officers, period. We're looking for enforcement, not revenue. Andy and the staff are currently reviewing the numbers to see if it would be a positive or negative return on the investment for additional enforcement details. And I need to mention this big time. Davie Police has offered to run a four-week trial program at no cost to the town. Again, at no additional cost to the town. The Davie Police Department and Chief Engel are moving mountains to make this work for us. And I thank them very much for that. And if this trial period works out with minimal to no cost, we should consider doing this full-time as a deterrent for our traffic problems. An expanded police presence throughout the town at key times is a plus for our residents and well-being. Of course, we're going to need the administration to give us a report at the end of this trial period to quantify the results and hopefully enable us to move forward with enhanced traffic enforcement on a permanent basis. They would be targeting hotspots, 166, 185th, 186, Mustang Trail, all over town at various times during the day. And to give you an idea of what we're talking about here, just for the record, we would be talking about red lights, stop signage, speeding, 10 miles over, 15 miles over, 20 miles over. We have different levels of revenue that the town would share in that. So I don't want to get into the greater details here. I'm sure Andy can cover that in his report when it comes to that. But I'd like your thoughts and I'd like your commitment-
I'm on board.
To all that.
I think it's a great idea. Like you said, it's not a moneymaker, but we're definitely going to hit them in the pocketbook and they're going to think twice. And I think that's what the public wants. They want these people to slow down. I mean, I got passed on volunteer just a couple of days ago, my granddaughter in the car. I was doing 40 and it just flew by me. And then they turned into publics. And it was like, really? I mean, I understand it. If there's an emergency, people are going to go, but they do need to be slowed down. I think it's, I think it's a pretty good idea and something we should, you know, check it out.
Good. Thank you, Bob.
Gary, I applaud your initiative.
Thank you.
I have been in Andy's ears since I've been on the council and before that as well over our speeding problems, people blowing off stop signs, cutting people off for years. And this is a great idea. He told me you were working on something that I need to let that play out and I'm glad. I'm glad you have done this. You know, I take Griffin every morning to work over here to 75. There's nutcases that pull out on 185th. Then when I get down to get on 75, people come from the left lane to get on I-75. It's really something. So the more we can put pressure on these drivers, maybe people will start to realize, you know, we're a little like Georgia used to be. Don't dare speed there.
Yeah, I would really, I wouldn't mind having that reputation in the town. You know, they do enforce the law.
Yeah.
Council member Elsa, you all right?
I agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, and I, and I want to say again, the Town of Davie is fully supportive and is moving a mountain to help us, okay? And this trial test program will be administered by Andy and, you know, the police department. And I've got, I can't see any negatives to this. Sorry, I just think this is a really workable and doable thing, so hopefully we'll move forward with it and it'll be a permanent-
Well, they make money too and the thing is, it'd be all great for four weeks. They do a trial and they end up coming back and say, "Hey, we wrote up a thousand extra tickets." And then the trial's up and they come back and they say, "Well, we got 42 this week," you know? As long as they don't back off, you know, or go sit somewhere and park, I mean, it'll be great. But if you're not moving, you're not going to catch them. You got to be moving around the town.
Well, that would be the task force's sole purpose.
Right.
Is traffic enforcement. And it would be like a, I believe, a two-man team that would be moving from hotspot to hotspot. But I don't want to get into all the details yet because that's really their bailiwick. We're going to tell them the areas we wanted enforced in and, you know-
Gary, it's actually done all over the country. I watch this little TV show on Friday nights called Live PD. Anybody watch that? It's cops on steroids.
Yeah.
And all over the country, towns and cities have task forces that either look for stolen cars or go after traffic violators, you know, people that are speeding, people that are making illegal turns, et cetera. And these people are busy. They're very busy, so we need it. We need it badly. Great idea.
Okay, good. All right, Andy, I guess, you know, it's up to you guys. Up to you guys. Give us progress report and let us know how it's going.
Who's going next?
I'm out of gas.
I'll go.
Go ahead, Dee.
Well, first I'd like to say welcome, Elsa. Congratulations. Look forward to working with you and glad you're part of our team.
Thank you.
Same thing with you and us. Looking forward to seeing you at more meetings, Matthew. You do a great job, always. The Esther Knight Foundation, the car show, it really was a success. And it was really a lot of fun. Gary and Sammy had loads of it. And it was funny how they all placed because Gary was literally number one, Sammy was number two, and the mango chili was number three. And they were all delicious, every one of them. I would like to thank Rick Bell for stepping in. Esther was there for his show. He got to tour all of it. He got to see all the cars. He got to see all the vendors that were there and he was greatly appreciated. Rick and Delia and the whole crew, they did a phenomenal job. But I'm going to give some extra kudos here tonight. December, you always, always, always come through for everybody. And congratulations, you did an incredible job. Thank you so much. I want to thank somebody else here tonight. And she has been around for a long time. And I'm sure we've all, I know I have, put a few grays in her hair. I think it's an incredible thing. Your speech was delightful. Ken would be so proud of you. And I, I'm really going to pay attention to all this now. Trying to think what else. Oh, December, I wanted to make another comment here about Arbor Day. I have two planters this year. One's three and one's five, and they're ready. We got boots and we got our gloves and we're ready to go. Again, thank you for coming out and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Couple of things, I also want to welcome Elsa to the team. I took the liberty to make a phone call to her last week when she was an applicant. And I met this really nice lady who was a lot of fun to talk to. We spoke for probably close to an hour, hour and a half. I mean, how can you start working with somebody without knowing them a little bit? And, you know, we've had some conversations over the last week. She was at the fire fee meeting the other day and what I'm realizing is she's a really nice lady. And she's a lot of fun. So I'm really looking forward to working with you. This is going to be an interesting year because we've got so much going on, so welcome to the team. Nicholas left. I wanted to congratulate him. I mean, my daughter put in a huge amount of hours over high school and I think she put in 450 hours. I can only imagine what 900 was like. She's about 400, actually. 900 means this kid was working every day, every other weekend. You know, he spent a lot of time and that, that's a commitment. And you know what? That kind of commitment at his age will carry through his whole life, which is what I'm hoping with my daughter. But he's done some great things and he definitely deserves the recognition he got tonight. Speaking of my daughter, she just got a job over at Victoria's Secrets at Pembroke Gardens. And this is in an ad. I'm not suggesting the place. But she's been going through some training there. And her company is freaking out over this coming holiday season. It's kind of an indicator of what we should all expect. They're giving them all kinds of loss prevention, basically theft, anti-theft training. They're concerned about-
They're concerned about their cars in the parking lot. And that's a pretty decent mall. I mean, we're not talking about a mall that's in a bad neighborhood. But when I had heard that from her, I had taken it back to where I work. And I work for a pretty big company that deals with retail organizations all over the country. And it seems to be the word in our industry also that theft this year at the retail level, cars in parking lots, stick-ups on the way out to your cars is gonna be pretty bad. And I haven't found out why yet. I mean, I asked Jessica to find out at work. Daddy, I forgot. Okay, that's fine, just try to figure it out. But really, the message here is the holiday shopping season, I think Black Friday started a month ago, if you watch TV. But, you know, the season really starts next week. And I want to encourage everybody to really be aware of the situation you're in. Keep your eyes open. You know, if there's somebody hustling up behind you, get on your cellphone and call for help. Most of the malls now, you know, they post phone numbers and all that if you're worried or just call 911. But I'm really concerned about it. So just be safe. Be aware of what's going on around you as you're doing your holiday shopping this year. I wanted to go back to George Kalis' concerns, Andy. I know that, if I recall, I was at the code meeting where the farmer came to the code enforcement meeting. And I believe out of that came some requirements for him to do screening and do some things to fix that place up because it was looking really bad. I took a drive past it right after that and I've been passed it two or three more times. I didn't see it, but I have been out there probably in a month now to drive past there. If he's not complying with the order, then, you know, whatever fines we were supposed to charge him, it seems like. I realize he's a farmer and I'm all for that, but he also needs to be a good neighbor. So if he's in breach. But then also, if he's doing new things, you know, again, if he's in compliance of the ag laws and whatever, you know, code we have in place, fine. But if he's not, I mean, it's not fair to the neighborhood. Keith, you and I spoke about six or eight weeks ago, refresh your memory. We spoke about the signed ordinance and how we can tie in some of the items that are in the work that the Rural Arts Board has done. You had said it doesn't make sense to include that in the signed ordinance, but references to it would make a lot of sense to make it required for, say, town signs and things like that. And maybe we put language in to incentivize commercial operations developers, that sort of thing, to comply with those standards. You and I haven't talked about it since then. I went back to the board and said, Keith's working on it. So I'm not sure how much you've progressed since we haven't spoken.
Sure, Mayor, may I respond? Sure. First off, this book was quite impressive.
Yeah.
And this is the first time I've seen this. It brings back a lot of memories because I remember half the signs in the book, including the Johnny Dollar Public Safety Building sign that was generated so many years ago. The vision of what the board is seeking seems to be a little bit different than what I was told, not by yourself, but by administration and staff. So at this point, I want to clarify the direction that the council wants to go with this so that I can articulate it in an ordinance to bring back to you. At this point, it's gonna come back into January for first reading and it's not a problem. What an ordinance would do, now that I see what this book has done, is it would basically codify this book and say, this is the sign manual for public signs in the town of Southwest Ranches. Where, what I'm hearing the board differs from what I was originally told, was I was originally told the town was looking to do it for its own signs. But when the board came up and spoke so eloquently, they spoke about doing it for all signs throughout the town. Not to retroactively go in and remove all the Sunshine Ranches, Rolling Oaks, Country Estate signs, but any signs in the future should be in line with this manual that was created. If what the board's vision is, is that, and it's not just town signs, but it's all public signs, I will get that ordinance to you. It's very easy to draft at that point and we can bring it to you immediately. It would basically say that any, all signs, new signs commencing after January 2020 would have to comply with the guidelines delineated within the sign manual. And it would be attached as an exhibit and it's that simple. If that is not your intent, I'd have to draft something totally different. So just please let me know.
I think you've got it, Keith. I think that's what we're looking for.
Is that a consensus of what the town's concern? You need five votes. I have to make sure, is this generally a consensus of what the council's looking for?
I would agree.
Okay. Totally different than what I was told originally. And I'm looking at Andy acknowledging that. So as a result, we will have this to you on first reading in January. So I'd ask for the board to come back, please, to support the item in January. And it will be that simple. It's gonna be adopting this manual for all future public signs in the town of Southwest Ranches.
Well, let me just throw a little monkey wrench in there. Is that for replacements?
Replacements, too.
Well, it's gonna be pretty hard. I mean, if you got a concrete brick wall.
If that brick wall or the signage needs to be replaced, you have to move forward at some point. Because if not, you can never get that sense of place that they're looking for.
Oh, okay, I got it.
And frankly, Dee, if you, when you get the time and go through that, you'll see, okay, if there's a wall, there's something you can put on it that would look really good. I mean, if you look at the sign out front here, that complies. The one that was just put up down at Founder's Park complies as well. So looks real good. Great job, guys. I know you've been pushing this and trying to get it done for years and years and years. Congratulations. It sounds like it's about to happen.
Looks good.
Moving forward, I want to definitely commend the Parks Board in December for the hard work that went into Frontier Trails. The vendor that we weren't saying is George Morris, PHI. This is in an ad, but he's done a heck of a job out there. I know what was supposed to be done and when I went out there, it just kind of blew me away. I said to George, what sign? I mean, what fence? Where did that come from? And he went into the whole thing. He said, Bob, this place would be a horror story in no time. All that landscape would be destroyed, all the nice work would be gone. So at my own cost. Plus, he graded it off much more nicely than he would have had to. He added to the landscape in there. So George, I think Gay said above and beyond. I totally agree. Take a drive past it. It's on, what is it, 193rd? 193rd, we're at Dog Legs. Just going through, so great job, guys. The Ed Board. I have driven that left-hand turn 10,000 times. I mean, I went that way for nine years, every day going to work. And that's, there's probably not, I think people are aware of how dangerous it is, so they always proceed with caution. But I've seen people make the left from the right lane. I've seen people about to make the turn and people coming from the park blowing through it, hauling a boat or an airboat. So I definitely support anything that the state of Florida is willing to do to improve the safety of that. And lastly, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Delsa, you're not on the hook, but if you'd like to say something, you may.
I want to thank Chief Bennett, Southwest Ranches Fire Rescue, for coming out, giving me a little bit of support, along with his Lieutenant, Matthew Amundson. We appreciate it. And I'd also like to just point out two people that have been big in my life. Ruth Wolfe. I've known her forever. Knew her husband, Ed. And Vince Valetta. I walked into a cockpit one day and there he was. Flight engineer extraordinaire. What a piece of work. We have stories, right, Vince? I love you both and thank you very much. I'm gonna do the very best job I can.
Awesome. Okay, I'd like to say, Delsa, welcome aboard. Thank you for stepping up. We greatly appreciate it. Hopefully you're gonna find this a lot of fun and very gratifying.
I mean, stepping up or stepping in, I'm not sure. To be determined. Thank you very much.
Yes. So the car show was an amazing success. I was out there, I think, almost all day, most of it. And it was a great turnout. The weather was perfect. If you were buying a day, you couldn't have purchased a better day. It was amazing. The weather was great, the temperature, the applicants, the people that showed up, the cars that showed up. It was quite an event. So they keep getting bigger and better and better. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how we're gonna expand much more. I think we need to find a little more parking somewhere, though.
Well, we had them come from quite a distance. Did you ever get a count on how many actually were registered? 148.
I know a couple of guys came from as far away as Apopka, which is up near Orlando. So I don't know if anybody came farther than that. But that was the farthest that I heard. So I thanked them for coming out and participating and whatnot, walking around looking at those vehicles. Just made me jealous. Also made me wish I had all the cars I had growing up. Oh, my gosh. I had a 1968 427 Corvette in high school. Then I wish I had that car today.
What a brat, huh?
But anyway, everybody that came out had a great time. I know, I think the animals were a huge success, the animals for all the kids and whatnot. And they had sack rides and they had all kinds of little events for the kids to do. And the radio guy, Andy knows, is friends with the radio guy, aren't you? Is that the guy?
We've only known each other about 35 years.
Only 35 years, okay.
Acquaintance, mere acquaintance.
Yeah.
And if you didn't get a chance to get out there and you missed all them good chilies, we had venison chili and organic plant chili and mango chili and Hormel chili. We had Hormel, five cans. Isn't that what you kept saying? It was great. The chilies were all great.
Anyway, so we're thrilled to have five of us back up here again. Look forward to getting some of the town work done now that we had to put on hold in the meantime. Because ever since we passed that 5-0 vote, that has hampered us a little bit. So anyhow, I'm good. So thank you all for coming out and playing with us. And feel free to do it anytime. We have mostly two meetings a month, but come the holidays, they're one. So this is it. We'll have one in December. I think we're gonna have two in January. We usually only have one, but I think we're gonna have two. So anyway, I'm good. Legal, Keith, you're up to bat.
Sure, Mayor. First off, obviously, congratulations to our newest council member. Only one thing for the record, all those calls that you're getting from everyone ends as of tonight. So, and we'll discuss public records laws and government and sunshine a little later. But just to make it clear, the calls were before she was sworn in as a council member. One of the definitions federally of unemployment deals with someone who is actively looking for a job but isn't able to get a job, essentially, in a nutshell. The reason I bring this up is because I got several calls last week and I actually sent it to Andy and Marty because one of the pop-ups, either on Facebook or otherwise, was a publication by the Florida Business Daily that had as its headlines, 34.2% unemployment in Southwest Ranches.
Really?
So, which everyone was very surprised about because of the fact that what was occurring was they were calling people, my wife probably being one of them, saying, are you employed? And the answer was no, thank you. Hang up the phone and they checked off unemployed and they moved on. As a result of the higher-than-normal unemployment rate in Southwest Ranches, a lot of residents in Southwest Ranches have been getting flyers in their mailboxes from the Federal Bureau of Jobs or whatever they're calling it. And they're getting confused and asking questions. Why is the federal government sending me a document on how to find work? And that is because our employment rate is 34. whatever percent, as according to Florida Business Daily. So if you got that in your mailbox, it's nothing to be fearful about. It is just a direct reaction to an article published about the town of Southwest Ranches unemployment rate. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Also, Councilmember Hartman mentioned Victoria's Secret. One thing I want to just mention is that, and I was called on this the other day, the federal government is looking for people to help with their census in 2020. Anyone looking for part-time work or a job, you can go right on the website and apply. They're looking for people to make calls, to go door-to-door. And it's a great opportunity for secondary income or primary income for anyone interested during next year. So I just want to bring that up as well. Councilmember Bright Cruz, congratulations on being the Chair of the Fire Board or whatever the new name is, moniker is for that. One thing I just want to mention, I heard you all ripped apart a 2011 document drafted by Burt Raines. Just for the record, Legal has never seen that document. I have no idea what you were looking at. And I can only imagine what Burt's grammar was that you all were critiquing for the four hours of that meeting. So I just want to make it clear that that was not borne by my office or created by my office at any time. So.
It was in English.
It was in English, it was an English class.
Plus, it was very painful.
But, you know, in the end, and I spoke to the mayor about this the other day, the board's charge is incredibly important. Not in looking at the RFP on the actual vendor who's gonna do the work to figure, you know, out the assessment, but to actually determine how that assessment is going to be spread amongst everyone in the town, whether it's commercial, industrial, agricultural, et cetera. And so as it moves forward, that's where the real debate should begin. And if you need help, just please call me and I'm happy to help direct that conversation. Another important issue that has come out with Broward County, and Councilmember Hartman has called me several times on this and brought it to my attention. And that is dealing with the water and sewer connection clauses in the Broward County Code of Ordinances. Years and years ago, and there's a lot of people in this audience who probably remember this, Lil Sayre and team led the charge at Broward County when they were basically trying to force Southwest Ranches connectivity to water and sewer. At that point, Broward County Commission voted with our opposition in the audience, I was young, I still remember these meetings, that they would put an exclusion in the code that said that if you lived within the RR or RE zoning designations, which was only the town of Southwest Ranches, prior to the town even being a town, you would be exempt from the hookup requirements. There is a piece of legislation that is going forward in Broward County in which they are trying to remove the town of Southwest Ranches exemption. I do not know honestly whether or not they knew they were trying to remove the town of Southwest Ranches exemption. Andy and I received a phone call late last night from the county attorney's office and we had a very spirited and long call about what the regulation did as it impacted the town of Southwest Ranches. To try to clarify this as much as possible, the town is outside of every designated service area. What a service area is, is when a public utility is required by law to service a certain district or jurisdiction, it's called a service area. We're not in anyone's service area, which means that whether someone wants water or sewer from Cooper City, Pines or Sunrise, which are the three main ones, they have to get in agreement with that utility to actually service them rather than that utility being forced to service them because they're within the designated service area. Where I am concerned and raise the concern is what happened essentially with Correction Corporation of America in which they told City of Sunrise that they wanted service from, sorry, Pembroke Pines, that they wanted service from Pines. And Pines initially said, we'll agree to do so, but you have to give us $3.5 million and then we'll consider servicing you. So, and that's what you can do when you're outside of a service area. You can name your own price, you can name your own terms, and the person either accepts it or they don't because there's no requirement for the public utility to service you. After a very long conversation last night, the Assistant County Attorney agreed to listen to language that Andy and I are diligently working on that would basically state that if you are outside of a designated service area, the requirement to connect will not be within, will not be required. Okay? the requirement to connect will not be within, will not be required, okay? And he promised to bring that back to the board. Independent of what our language would be, Pembroke Pines is in vehement opposition to this regulation. In fact, the county attorney said, if I'm the one that brings Pines and Southwest Ranches together, it's a very good day. So, you know, they have asked us to draft a resolution in opposition, but I have told the county attorney that until we determine whether or not they're going to accept our language, we're going to hold off on doing a resolution of opposition because if they adopt our language, then we're in the clear and there's really no worry. Where this relates, and I mentioned it to Rod as I walked in and I got to fill you in the whole conversation, is not really even so much on existing lines, but it's on what they call, Andy, new subdivisions. Is that their language? And I said, what is a subdivision? It's basically any new home, okay? So, you know, the subdivision's not clearly defined. So subdivision, you know, could be two homes going up in the same area.
Site plan.
Right, same site plan. No one knows what a subdivision is. And at that point, if a water or sewer line crossed within, I think a quarter mile of your property, about fifteen hundred feet or so, thousand feet, you would be forced to connect. And that's where I said, we're going to have major problems. The reason why this also impacts current issues in the town is our several residents who are seeking to extend water lines to their property. There's a property owner on Sterling who has caught a deal with Cooper City to extend their water line. And I have told the legal counsel on, I think there's three right now, that they have to bear with me a little bit before we can carte blanche tell them to do it because in all of those cases, it crosses so many properties that, you know, we need to understand the impacts of that water or sewer service before we just go ahead. So I wanted to bring this to everyone's attention because it's a very important issue and it's fully developing, but I did think that our call last night, Andy, I'm sure you'll chime in if you need to, I thought it was a very good start and they really truly did understand our concerns. Debbie mentioned the turn off of Griffin and US twenty-seven. I assume this has been discussed in the past. That's a state roadway. So the only way you're going to get what you're looking for is by hounding District Four Jerry O'Reilly and, you know, explaining the necessity through almost like a grassroots efforts of the importance of putting that in. And so what I would suggest to you is maybe scheduling a meeting. It's hard to get, so it's going to be like way out. But scheduling a meeting with mayor, commissioners, whoever wants to take charge with that, with you or whoever from your group to explain why it's such a necessity. And Andy, if you want, I'm happy to work on that. But that was that issue. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving to all and look forward to seeing everyone in December.
Is there any update on Pines litigation?
We're doing absolutely personally nothing on that. I saw today that the judge, seven years into the litigation, the Correction Corporation of America, has nothing to do with our case, tried to amend their complaint against the City of Pembroke Pines. And the judge denied their request to amend their complaint, which has been drafted seven years ago. There's no doubt in my mind they're going to appeal. Once they file an appeal, it's another six months stay of doing absolutely nothing. So it is, everything is on hold as it relates to the town of Southwest Ranches in that matter.
Okay. Keith, I just have a question for you. Do you either correct my memory or correct the record? You had mentioned that Pines offered water at three and a half million. I thought that was Sunrise.
No.
Pines wouldn't provide water.
Pines originally, it changed. Originally, Pines said, we will provide water and sewer, but our hookup fee is three and a half million dollars to do so.
Got it.
To which CCA eventually said yes.
Sure.
But what the biggest problem was, to just rehash history, is that CCA hadn't gotten the award yet from the federal government. So they were unwilling to shell out three and a half million dollars until they had a signed contract.
Sure.
By the time the federal government told them, this is a done deal, we're going forward with you, the opposition had grown so great that Pines said, our deal's off the table, we're no longer allowing you to connect. And we brought that up actually also with the county attorney's office yesterday because if you have a situation where a water or sewer provider can pick and choose who it wants to connect to and who doesn't and how much they're going to charge each person and, you know, it's too much discretion and it totally jeopardizes our residents and the future of the town.
Thank you. It's like eight years ago. My memory gets a little fuzzy around that car ago.
Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I actually have a few things for you tonight. First of all, I'd like to welcome our newest council member. We've had the opportunity to speak by phone, by email, in my office on multiple occasions. I think you're off to a great start. I've enjoyed working with you and I think you're going to do just fine. So I wish you all the best and we'll do everything we can to help you. As far as the car show, for anybody who missed the car show, you missed just a tremendous, tremendous event. My wife did take part in the chili. I will tell you that she voted for both Sammy and for Gary. I don't even want to know who she voted one and two, so I'm sworn to secrecy on that, but she did vote for both of you. So congratulations on that. On the US twenty-seven intersection, that came to my attention a couple of days ago. Just want to let you know, we've already drafted a letter to FDOT that will go out tomorrow over my signature and the mayor's signature. We've already both signed off on it actually before this meeting, requesting they reconsider and look at that again. So we are making that request and we'll pursue it out that way. As far as the K-List issue on the farm next door, obviously, we will enforce what we can and where they're in violation and we'll check that. Julio did let me know the vehicles that have been parked out there that you mentioned, they've already been cited for that. So that is in process. So we'll make sure we stay on top of it. Want to let you know that on Thursday, December nineteenth at four thirty, we're going to have our interfaith holiday lighting ceremony out in front of Town Hall. Wanted to invite all of you to come over and join us for that. Again, that's Thursday, December nineteenth at four thirty. Just make sure I don't miss anything. This week, when I met with you all individually, I furnished you with a copy of a proposed noise ordinance that grew out of some issues that many of you have raised. Former Vice Mayor Jablonsky had brought up issues with fireworks potentially. We wanted to address that. I think Council, now Vice Mayor Schroder had gotten some issues on some noise complaints and some other things. You've all brought us some different issues that have come up from the community. Russell spent a great deal of time on that. So I furnished that with you. I'm not sure if we're overreaching or not, but I want to, before I put it on for consideration, for reading, we either need to schedule it for a workshop or kick it to the comp plan board. And I wanted to ask the council for.
If I can chime in for a minute. I had a few minutes and I went through it. It's a lot in here. It's a lot to consider. I personally would like to have a workshop on it, maul it over, see what we think first. If we feel it's too much for us, we can always throw it back to, you know, later on to the comp board to look at.
I'm good with a workshop.
But I think to have a workshop and really get some teeth into it and look at it because some people might not like this and some people might not like that. And I just think it would be good for us to educate ourselves on all the different things that, you know, you don't want to tie your hands up too bad, you know?
Why don't we give it to the comp board?
I'm just going to say, I'm sorry. Being new on the block, I think a workshop would be good, at least for me, then I can, you know, be fully up to date and ready to go.
Because this isn't really what the comp board usually does. So like I said, I think I'd like to have a workshop on it. If we feel it's too much for us, we can always put it back out to them and let them maul it over too, or if we have too many.
Why don't we give it to the comp board first and we get their information for our workshop?
Because then it's more limited. I really like to see, you know, what all of us have to say about it. And if they get it, then.
You basically want to go through the whole thing ourselves and then send it there if we need to?
Yeah. I mean.
I'm good with it.
Okay, I heard three of you, they're in favor of scheduling a workshop. Okay. All right, then we'll move forward with it that way. The only other thing I had is I just want to let you all know, I'll be out of the office next week, that Russell will be here to address any issues or concerns that you might have.
Lucky Russell.
I wanted to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Russell, number ten, resolution, please.
Okay, because of the late addition, we're actually going to just, for the record, renumber that to number eleven. So.
Okay, sorry.
Not a problem. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting the selection and negotiation committee's recommendation and awarding continuing contracts to Craven Thompson and Associates, Inc., Calvin Giordano and Associates, Inc., and Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. for professional engineering services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Make a motion.
Second.
Mayor, just real briefly, and I see some of the engineering firms are here, so thank you for the ones who have come. This is a continuing contract for the town to have a list of engineers that it could go to when the town has issues. My biggest challenge with this is I was given three engineering price sheets. And they are so totally diametrically different, you know, that I urge them all to get together in the future to create a monopoly on fees because it is absolutely impossible to go through them because they all categorize all their staff members in different positions and different titles. I will tell you that after several conversations, all of them have come back with specialized fees for the town of Southwest Ranches. And I for one truly thank all of them for reworking their fee and price sheets to try to create more uniform numbers for the town.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate that hard work. All right, any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the council, any additional discussion on this matter? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number twelve.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, relating to the memorandum of understanding regarding a collaborative study and a subsequent development of an integrated solid waste and recycling system, appointing members of the Town Council to represent the town in the working group, electing to or to not appoint members of the Town Council to represent the town in a technical group, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, if I may speak to.
Go right ahead.
We've previously approved a memorandum of understanding to work with Broward County and other municipalities on a replacement group for what was the Resource Recovery Board that expired back in two thousand and twelve. This concerns the future of solid waste for the county. A very, very important matter for all of us. The town, in our solid waste contract with Waste Pro, has a provision that deals with disposal. So we're very well positioned, but we're probably the only ones in Broward who are so positioned. So this group, which is being coordinated by the Broward League of Cities, is an effort for us to work with our colleagues, with other municipalities, with the council, to secure the future long-range planning for solid waste. And what we're asking you to do here tonight is appoint a representative from the council, and I believe the mayor is willing to do so, to be our municipal representative to this group as needed. And we'll also be able to put a staff member on a technical committee, same as the MPO works. So we're asking for your support in nominating Mayor McKay to serve and represent the town in this capacity.
I have a question about this. I don't have any problem with you serving on it, Doug, but I thought I read something from the League of Cities today or yesterday that says they want to appoint people from the four largest cities and the four smallest cities and, you know, people that use plastic garbage pails. I don't remember the whole breakdown, but are we going to serve on there or are they just going to pick, like they do with the League of Cities with everything, things that eliminate us?
If I may?
Please.
The, this group, which will be comprised of all the municipalities, what will then, that group will then comprise the, what will become the governing board. And that will be, that group will consist of one county commissioner, four representatives from the top ten most populous municipalities, three from the second ten, and then one representative from the last ten most populous municipalities.
So it sounds to me like Doug would be working on a working group that then will provide information to this austere grand group that we won't be part of.
To establish this group. But what I suggest to you, council member, is we're being a good neighbor. As I said before, our contract covers the disposal of waste, so we're in better shape than everybody else.
Right.
But we do want to keep the seat at the table for whatever's going on.
I just don't like the way they're taking this yet again, you know? To me, this is like the board D sits on the.
The MPO.
MPO where we're shut out because they should have all representatives from all the cities and towns versus this small group that makes the decisions for the entire county.
The power is in the population.
I didn't bring it up tonight, but seeing as how you did bring that up, I'm going to enlighten you on that. You cannot believe the people that are on that MPO board that are now starting to see the light. They realize, and legislature, our reps that represent us here in Broward County, they're not doing anything for us. And we have people that sit on this MPO, I don't need to mention her name at this point, but she understands it quite well. And so they are trying to up the ante as far as getting more board members. They want all, all of the Broward County Commissioners on there. You know, somebody made a suggestion about we only need seven. Well, if you're going to have seven, you might as well have more. Let's up it. They are fighting tooth and nail to get rid of the POs. That's.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Who is? Who's fighting?
The state.
The state wants control of the dollars.
They want control of the money.
It'll all be done by FDOT.
So we're fighting very hard. I don't think it's going to be a home slide for them. We have good reps that are doing that. I don't know what Brian's position is with Davy. I know, is he the vice mayor? Brian, collect that.
He was. I don't know if he still is, but he was.
Okay. He's fighting very hard for this. And he's very vocal. Barbara Sharice is very vocal, Patty Good. You know, they've all thrown their two cents in and said, let's make it bigger. Everybody should count.
Yeah.
You know, that no taxation without representation.
We fought a revolution over that.
And I have said it, I can't even tell you how many times. You want my money? Well, hello. It's right here. Let me have a voice.
Yeah, good. Thank you. All right. So I make a motion?
I second it.
I accept. Roll call, I guess.
For the record, do we want to state the staff person? We haven't stated that publicly.
We don't need to, but it will be Sandy Luongo.
It's in the resolution.
Makes sense.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Thank you, Doug. Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
I like going last. Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Thirteen.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a year-end budget adjustment for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget and providing for an effective date.
Marty, you're up to bat.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Vice Mayor tonight on her appointment. And as you know, we're at month fourteen. This is our annual year-end budget cleanup. And before I get into that, I also welcome to Delta because it's perfect timing, which is fantastic. Because our next budget year will, and calendar, will be before council in February. So it's perfect timing for you to start to get into the new process and budget season for two thousand and twenty-one because we're in twenty right now. This one tonight is our annual Florida statute and charter cleanup that covers our five funds. Now this amendment really does not have any impact to our actual, it's just budgetary components, but I promise. But I promised Andy I'd give a little recap, uh, preliminary, uh, for our actual performance for fiscal year 2009. In regards to our last year, we've had four of the five funds that have, um, stayed within our expenditures. It's only our debt service fund, which I'll cover later, uh, that we need to do an appropriation of fund balance. Uh, going directly into our Exhibit A, uh, in detail. Uh, we've had all funds, all departments, which, uh, is part of our charter budgetary control. All departments stayed, uh, within their, um, expenditure range. And I do wanna, uh, accolades, best accolades for the volunteer fire fund. Because this is the seventh consecutive year that the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue, Inc., uh, the reporting component unit, um, that stayed within its budgetary constraint. So congratulations to that, and I know the chief is in the back of the room, and congratulations chief. With, with that in mind, uh, the exhibit has all the detailed line item explanations. Uh, we've, uh, I'd like to just cover the four departments, uh, that did exceed and give you a brief overview. Uh, our first one, which is usually, uh, the legislative that, um, needs an increase because of fantastic scholarship and fundraising initiatives through the Scholarship and Education Advisory Board. Uh, that requires a $27,764, over and above, practically over and above. Uh, there was a small expense unanticipated as it relates to our council meeting recordings. Uh, but, um, the, the higher amount and expenditures were all due to fundraising with equal revenue offset. So, congratulations to the Scholarship Education and Advisory Board. Our building permitting service, you will see, uh, we need a $414,668 increase. And if you look at the revenues on the top side, that also requires, um, a revenue increase of $564,562 um, of additional over and above budget. Uh, we've had a fantastic, uh, building permitting year. And I just went through, uh, October, payments to building permitting. And I, uh, I foresee us also, uh, barring any catastrophe, having a wonderful year in building permitting. Uh, the code enforcement service was a little bit, um, lower, the zoning permit fees were lower than originally budget. And, uh, that was offset by lower zoning permit fee revenue of $11,145. And, uh, finally, our planning services. And that goes really hand in hand with building and permitting. Uh, we need to increase their budget, uh, because of high activity, um, throughout the year uh, with planning and public hearing items. Going to page two of Exhibit, uh, A, it involves our debt service fund. The debt service fund requires an appropriation of $75,000 for, uh, excuse me, $75,370 uh, increase from, uh, the debt service fund balance in order to cover our unanticipated Hurricane Irma principal reduction. So, uh, that's a favorable item, because the same $75,370 was received in the general fund. And we're gonna keep it in the general fund. And we have sufficient reserve to, uh, fund the payment of our principal, uh, for, uh, reduction in our line of credit. Uh, so, in effect, that's offsetting between funds. Uh, with that in mind, uh, I, I need to report the fact that, uh, the hurricane, uh, impact as it relates to Hurricane Irma, uh, throughout the year. Uh, we've, uh, received, as Andy mentioned previously, up to $2 million. We receive, uh, that is as of September 30th, 2019. We just received $903,000, uh, dollars of reimbursement, which we automatically utilize to reduce our line of credit. Uh, at year end, we had $1.8 million, uh, dollars of line of credit outstanding. Uh, we, after we paid off the $900,000, brings that down to $900,000. So out of our line of credit of 3.7 million, we only have a $900,000 left, uh, remaining. And, uh, I'm expecting to receive that within the next three to six months, so that's very, very good. Uh, and now moving on to actual. Um, I'm also happy to report preliminarily that we expect to have at least a $500,000 to $600,000 excess of revenue over expenditures, which is a surplus, uh, that will directly go down to our fund balance for fiscal year 2019. Uh, I don't have the final numbers yet, but we are, are still accumulating our accounts receivables. Um, our audit is forthcoming, and that will be back to you for approval, uh, during February and March of next year. Uh, the, uh, second thing in regards to actual, I wanted to cover is the fact that our, um, increase in net assets as relates to our solid waste enterprise fund uh, will show a $4 million swing between cash receipts and accounts receivable for Hurricane Irma recoveries. So in effect, our three and a half million dollar negative, uh, position will flip and change to a $500,000 positive uh, surplus as of 2019. So that's, uh, uh, fantastic. Uh, the, uh, Hurricane Irma recoveries are coming much quicker than we expected. And that's all I have to report, and I, I close it to you in case, uh, or if you have any questions. And, um, I wanna thank staff for excellent job, uh, for fiscal year 2019, thank you.
Awesome.
Go ahead.
Do you need a motion? Uh, I'll make a motion approve, but I'd like to make a comment first, and that is, uh, I wanna thank Andy, Marty and Keith, excellent job administratively. Um, I don't know if everybody caught what he just said, but our budget year 19, 20, we have a surplus of over half a million dollars. I, I owe that to frugal management, watching all the pennies, nickels and dimes, uh, just having really good decision-making, so. Anyway, I make my motion to approve.
I just got a question or two Marty. I didn't come up with the same number as Gary, and that's when I asked the questions. So I see here on, uh, what is it, uh, page, uh, 86 of 103, that at the bottom you've got, you know, resolution increases current budget. I'm, I'm assuming the 446 is revenue, that's an increased expectation of revenue?
Yes, uh, exactly.
Okay.
There will be more, uh, depending result, okay.
I wanna, I wanna understand your optimism. But then down below, we've got basically debt service increase of about 75 grand. So, in my mind, we really have, uh, net, uh, improvement of our position about 371?
The five to 600,000.
That's where I was going next.
Yeah, it, that only pertains to the general fund.
Right.
Uh, the debt service fund will have a decrease. I don't have the number as of yet across all funds.
Okay.
Because there will be increases in our transportation fund, our capital project fund. Some of it relates to rollovers, carryovers.
Right.
Uh, for projects such as Tisdor for next year. Uh, so I can only pinpoint, uh, tonight, uh, as it relates to the general fund, but that is correct. The debt service fund will have, um, a, uh, a deficit of 75,000, which requires the utilization of the fund balance.
Right, right. Alright, so the five to 600,000 dollar, um, increase overall is, is, you, you just explained it, never mind, thank you. Thank you. Did somebody second?
Yep, still needs a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comment on this matter?
And I reiterate Gary's positive comments, you guys.
Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to us, any additional discussion on this matter?
Thank you.
Seeing none? Call the roll.
Councilmember Amundson? Councilmember Amundson?
I'm sorry, I'm.
We're doing the roll call.
Yes.
Marty's talking about.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fourteen? Approval of minutes?
Good job Marty.
Yes.
Motion to approve both, minutes?
Together?
We're doing them separate or?
No, together.
Together, okay. Make a motion?
He did, yeah he did.
Oh, second?
Alright. Call the roll.
Discussion?
Really?
I didn't expect that response. Russell, would you be offended if we just put these on a consent agenda and all in favor, yes, versus even going through one, two and three?
I would love a, a, a complete consent agenda.
Well, yeah. Then you can go home early.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about it in the minutes.
Yeah, councilmember Hartman, just.
Whatever's council's pleasure.
Years ago, we, we had consent agendas, and which any council member could pull any item from the agenda. And every meeting we'd get there and they'd pull every single item off the consent agenda, and that's how it, it came to the, the non-consent. A, as far as voting, all votes in the town have to be by roll call pursuant to charter.
Oh, so you can't do a consent agenda on, on just the minutes?
You can do consent agenda, but all voting has to be by roll call. You say, could there just be a vote by affirmation, it always has to be by a roll call.
Okay, so we need to change the charter, is that what you're saying? Alright, nevermind.
We'll be having a committee for that soon enough.
I probably, uh, spent as much time as the last three meetings talking about this topic, so, thank you.
Alright, roll call please.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll take it, thank you. Thank you everyone for coming out, greatly appreciated.